I call this meeting to order. It's number one. Everybody stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We give away this wire.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Oh.
Whoa.
You have to do this. Oh, he's here.
He's on.
Oh.
Are you seconding Craig?
Turn mute.
He's got to unmute.
He's got to unmute.
Yes. Second.
Okay. It's been seconded by Craig. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Poor Craig, you can't even be in Florida. Sorry, Craig.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March first meeting.
Second.
Perfect.
That's right. Any discussion on the meeting minutes from the last meeting? All through there?
Aye.
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 And you follow? All right, Moshe Carey.
All right, short report today. Winter sports ended last week. We had some tough losses Monday, Tuesday, and the first John, if you guys recall. But seasons ended well. Um, the banquet will be virtual and soon. When asked who won, I have no idea. Fall two sports open their seasons this week with volleyball games in Kalamun on Friday night. And then the football team will be playing in Bolivar on Saturday afternoon. On Tuesday and Thursday this week, there are careers in construction virtual conferences. And next Friday, there is a virtual conference on Steam through the Connecticut Science Center. Let me have a show. I'm literally just writing a show in my notes because it changes daily, like I don't know. So as of this second, it is Friday, Saturday, Sunday being streamed. The links is on the school website. Show ticks for you, then you can search down SC Central. If you're streaming, $10. Friday, Saturday, Sunday is on demand. So anywhere between Friday night and Sunday night, we can opt in whenever. And then our in-person tickets. Did they go out to the public? Maybe? They went out to patrons. I know that. So that went out. Mrs. DeBel said we only have like 10 seats left for our Sunday night, Saturday night show. So those are Friday night at seven, Saturday at one, and Saturday at seven. That's everything. Everything's $10. Makes life easy. I'm not the one having to do the math. The shields like, don't know how I did on that math stuff today. It's a little scary. So are there any questions?
That was an excellent report. I wish you luck, break a leg. Oh, I can't say luck, sorry. Break a leg just again. And I'm looking forward to streaming it. I will be, I think that'll be my Friday night activity with Popcorn.
Hey Kylie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she surprised me, came home unannounced this past weekend. So you could be.
I didn't get an invite.
Well, because I didn't get an invite and she was in my house.
She showed up at your house.
She showed up.
Yeah.
So good luck.
Thank you. I'm trying to do rehearsals.
I gave your mom something, by the way, for volleyball, so.
You love.
I gave your mom something for volleyball, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You will.
Hi. So Mrs. Coulter and the middle school band report that as more students receive a four-day instruction, our group lessons and rehearsals are not only becoming louder, but growing musically. We're currently working on ideas to recruit as a full group. This picture shows how we currently listen and record individual tracks during small group lessons. Please note that the students were perfectly socially distant while performing. They just couldn't fit them in the picture at that distance. Our orchestra is also having successful socially distant lessons. Middle School Page Tunis have a competition next week on Thursday the 18th. The team has read eight books, a total of 1,781 pages, spread by most of the team members and both coaches, Ms. Green and Ms. Denali. Stay tuned for the explore meeting to hear the results of said competition and all of their hard work. Middle School Mathematics won our last meet. We won the South Division over Letchworth by 90 points total. We also beat everyone in the Northern Group by at least 24 points. Qualified girls basketball had a first game last Saturday, and the next one is this Wednesday. Any questions?
Awesome report. I don't know what you, did you, did they take their flippies? I don't think you.
Regina got it.
Okay, good. So make sure you take your flippies.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Diana. Anyways.
Well done.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks, Diana. See you.
And you stepped over that cord beautifully. Well done. Okay. Presentation by Regina McMaster.
So Julie had asked if we would allow Bridgette to do a presentation. Bridgette, do you have a PowerPoint?
Oh, I don't have.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and just talk about the presentat-, or the project that she worked on here at school. And Julie, did you want to give a little bit of introduction?
Uh, well, sure. Well, so Regina McMaster is a Girl Scout, and she did a gold award project at the school that she's about to tell you about. And she's been a Girl Scout since kindergarten. And the gold award is the highest award you can earn in Girl Scouts. And it takes a lot of hard work because you have to complete a bronze project and a silver project before you complete the gold. And the gold is an independent project that usually amounts to about 80 hours. And it's a project that helps the community or has continuity. So with that, Bridgette is in my Girl Scout troop. So I wanted to have her come in and talk about her project that was done to benefit the school.
Great.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Um, so like Julie said, I started Girl Scouts when I was in kindergarten, and it taught me many things like friendship and how to be a leader, and many other things that I've carried throughout my everyday life. For my project, I painted inspirational quotes in the fourth and fifth grade girls' bathroom in hopes to inspire young girls. I wanted them in bright colors while still incorporating the gold blue motto and royal blue. I chose this project so I could inspire young girls and lead them in the right direction. And I feel positive reinforcement helps with stress, with the chronifiers, many kids are stressed about returning to school, and these messages can encourage them to have the confidence to go forward. And I also feel this message will give kids the courage to bring others up rather than bringing them down. The strengths, talents, and skills I put into action for my project, I use fire perspective ability, and I like to motivate others to make others feel good. I would like to pursue a career in business in marketing and advertising. And I feel this project has helped me develop those skills in that area through leading a team to get a project done, researching what phrases would appeal, and bringing the idea into action. I want to have a special thanks to Ms. Satorah for making my project come to life. She, yeah, she sponsored all my supplies, and she helped me throughout my entire project with all her support. And I'd like to thank Mr. Curtin for sharing paints I had and his discount.
Good deal.
And I also like to thank Zoe Morgan and Brent for helping me paint and draw throughout my project. Ms. Crane for sharing her experience from doing other gold projects and helping me throughout mine. And Ms. Matthews, my Girl Scout leader, and I'd like to thank her for her support with my project. And these are some of the things that I would hope girls would get out of my project. I want them to empower each other, encourage positive attitudes, increase their confidence, make them feel better about themselves, and hopefully be kind with each other, make them feel safer in school, lead to less bullying, and encourage girls to be positive to other girls. Here are a few pictures. So we started off with tracing them onto the walls through a projector for my dad's art class where he teaches the dance. And then we went on to painting, and I did some above the mirror, above the sink, across from stalls, and in every stall. This is us painting the big mural. And then that's the finished one. That's where I incorporated the gold with the motto and different shades of blue. And then here are just a few other ones that I put into the stalls.
Very nice.
And that's the one above the sink. And then the one on lower right-hand corner is another one at the stall. Thank you.
Across entire school and all the bathrooms. A couple of ones for the boys and that's the next project, right? So you fire everything. I'll throw some money in. Thank you, Bridgette. I'd be personally on the score. I'll sponsor, I'll sponsor you. Mrs. Satorah sponsored you. I'll sponsor you. I'll sponsor her. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Except you had a chance to talk to any of the students.
I haven't talked to any.
No? Because it is beautiful when you walk by and you don't think of the bathroom as being beautiful, but they certainly are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did you want to?
Um, no.
All right, Mr. Forrester. And you have to follow up all the kids.
Well, this.
When I hear the missus. Always spell wizard by you.
Yeah. I want some inspirational, some inspirational quotes here.
You need to find a different presenter. So just want to take a couple of minutes and look at our debt service, transportation, and our benefits budgets for next year. Um, the two there that are kind of shaded a green color. Uh, as you may recall, we did a refunding resolution back in December time, I think, to re- uh, resourcing debts. And we actually went through and sold three calls to bonds, sold some new bonds, and ended up saving ourselves about $370,000 in interest costs over the next six years. Um, so you'll see that that one bond there is going away, so we're not going to make a payment there. But this guy is going to go up just a little bit. But overall, we're seeing a $50,000 savings in the current school year by refunding that debt. And like you say, about 370 over the course of the entire issuance. So, um, that was exciting a couple of weeks ago. Um, this piece of debt here in the orange, uh, we made our last payment last June, so that kind of went away. And that's, that right there is the biggest reason for having that negative tax gap that we talked about a few weeks ago. Um, the debt falls off, and so that's just the way that works out. So and down here, we have our transfer to capital, that $100,000 capital play project. We filled into our budget, I think last year was the first year. Those are to do those small $100,000 projects. Um, try and keep those as a single prime contract, so you only deal with one contractor, get them in and get them out. And we get aid on that the following year. So that $100,000, we have building aid of almost 70 coming in this year to offset that cost. So, um, in general, our, the nice thing about the debt service budget is, it is what it is. You know, there's not a lot of play there other than when you can refund a little bit of debt. Um, transportation, uh, not a lot of change going on here too much. Um, we were struggling up here to find a couple bus monitors and talking with Jay and his team. They really, they're, they're not really seeing the need there. So we did take about $20,000 out of the budget there. Uh, we cut down a little bit on fuel. Uh, fuel prices have gone up, but we haven't seen quite as much increase there as maybe we would have thought. So we're hopeful between New York State contract pricing and such, we'll be able to keep that down. But overall, we're thinking we're going to be able to cut just about $45,000 out of our transportation budget next year. But there's one catch. The one catch would be as long as we don't have to go to double tripping next year to get all of our kids coming back five days a week. If we have to do that, we'll have to work out what that would look like. But right now, that's, right here is where we're sitting at, just over a million dollars in our transportation department. Um, then lastly, our benefits. This is, um, going up quite a little bit, about $350,000. And it's all, most all, right there in the health insurance line, going up just about $300,000. Uh, our teacher retirement system is going up as a percentage wise, just a smidgen. Um, uh, ERS, our Employee Retirement System for our retiree or for our sports staff, is going up percentage wise a lot, like it's percent and a half. Um, but smaller overall payroll, so smaller overall dollars. But still going up about $40,000, $50,000 there, uh, up there in ERS. We've been a little bit, very lucky, actually. We're not saving a lot. We're going down about $3,000. Haven't had any knock on wood claims on our workers' compensation, uh, issues of late. So we'll keep that going as long as we can keep the salt down and people getting into the building safely. We're gonna, we'll be all right. So, um, overall, again, that, that's going up about $350,000, but most of it is right there in, in our medical insurance. And the nice thing about debt services, it is what it is. There's not a lot there that you can do with. The difficulty with benefits is it's the exact opposite. It is what it is, and you can't touch it, and it always seems to go up rather dramatically. So, um, they are what they are, but we're trying to manage them as best we can. Being part of the Flash P Health Insurance Consortium does help. Similar with that, uh, Workers Compensation Consortium where, um, overall, it does help spread our risk and keep us, keep us in a better place than we'd be on our own. So with that, I would open it up for any questions that you all might have.
Yep. I, we planning on replacing a vehicle or two next year? Now, we, I know we didn't this year.
We, we, we need to think about that pretty seriously, yes.
Okay.
Do we have a plan right this second? No, David, we do not.
Um. But if we did, that wouldn't affect the budget because you wouldn't start paying for another year. Is that right?
Um, correct. Ideally, in my brain anyway, ideally, you know, at some point, we try to build in, whatever our replacement schedule is, I, I'm totally making this up. If it's one bus a year.
Yeah.
In my brain, if we could build that into our budget and just build it into our general operating budget, because you're going to get aided on that over time. There's no debt issuance costs. There's, you know, once, once the budget is then passed by the voters, you can cut your purchase order and actually order a bus that comes in over the summer. When you're less busy, you can get it in service. You, you know the drill.
Yeah.
You bet down that road.
Yeah.
Um, that would be ideal, but we certainly need to think about what, what we're, to buses that we are going to need to replace. I think that's very true.
So that, that conversation will be, is an ongoing conversation.
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, Jay is looking at the difference between diesel and gasoline. Uh, I know his, his preference for a maintenance end of the thing would be to go down that gasoline road. But, you know, the cost of those is, over the course of time, seems to be a little bit more, a little bit more pricey, so. All things that we're working through.
The, out of curiosity, we talked a little about, about bond anticipation notes versus bonds. When we get to the point that, to do bus replacement, I bet you would think in terms of bans, which you're not, as, as opposed to.
We would, yes.
Okay.
We would actually, yeah, because right now, a one-year ban, you're sitting somewhere around 60 basis points.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
You'll pay more to issue that ban than you will to pay the interest on it.
The bond, you mean?
No, even just issuing a ban, there's issuance costs to that.
Okay.
And by the time you, you still have to pay your fiscal advisor, you're going to have to pay a ban council and all of that. By the time you go through all of that, you'll pay more in those costs than you would in interest, in this interest rate environment.
So you would still do bonds as opposed to bans then?
No, no.
No.
Not being clear.
Okay.
I would ban something.
Okay.
Actually buy a bus with a ban.
Okay.
The interest rate on that ban is somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 basis points.
Okay.
You will pay more, you're going to have to, when you issue a ban or a bond, makes no difference. When you issue a form of debt, there are issuance costs associated with that. We would pay more, my, this is an assumption, but I believe it's right. We would pay more to issue that ban than we would pay an interest expense on that ban for that year because the interest rates are so low.
Very good.
Question on the health or the medical insurance. Are you seeing, is that increase partially related to the COVID and the pandemic?
It is. Um, in listening to the Zoom meeting that the Flash P Board of Directors had, um, yeah, because there was a lot of costs associated with that to the plan, that absolutely impacted the, the plan. I think, I think the Flash plan is looking to lose right now somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million in the current school year and a good portion of that is COVID related, yes. I can't give you an actual number of what it is, but yeah, they were saying it's rather significant. My understanding is, um, a similar plan overall of Leroy, the Genesee Valley Healthcare Plan through the GD Bosse's, very similar as far as, um, dealing with COVID and costs on their plan is very similar to ours. Excuse me, it's my understanding.
You have the, uh, the TRS numbers for 2021 versus 21.2, like what the percentage was.
This year is 9.6, I think, going to 9.8.
Question. One, twice?
So as Regina was talking, we're all very excited about the Little Women, the Broadway musical, because we are allowed to have limited in-person seating. So including the cast members on the stage, we are allowed to have up to 100 people in the audience. So very excited about that piece. And it is, as Regina said, March 26th through the 28th. And if you are unable to get a seat and would like to watch it, you can certainly buy a ticket for the streaming. And recently, you heard that the waiver to the United States Department of Education had been denied from the New York State Education Department. So New York State Ed is still trying to work with the United States Department of Education to see exactly what the expectation is going to be for the assessments. So they recently sent a survey, and Mrs. Satorah and Mr. Salatall helped me complete the information required of this survey about the assessments that we're currently administering in-house and really trying to show that throughout this year, even though there hadn't been state assessments last year, that we are utilizing a lot of formative assessments, teacher-made test assessments, as well as some benchmark research-based assessments, and really collecting a lot of information and data on our students. So still waiting to see what that requirement will be for the New York City assessments. So as, um, as we've been kind of experienced throughout the COVID-19 experiences, is that on March 10th, the Department of Health released guidance regarding travel quarantine in fully vaccinated people. So they said that if you were fully vaccinated, which meant you are 14, 14 days past your second dose, that you would not be required to quarantine. But if you were not fully vaccinated, that you would still have to fall under the quarantine requirements, which is quarantine for four days, test on the fourth day, and if you were negative, you would be able to leave quarantine. And then a day later, Governor Fomo announced no need to quarantine for domestic travel after April 1st, 2021. So, um, I will be drafting a memo that I will be sharing with our Department of Health just to make sure that it is correct and, um, really hoping that I can tell all staff and students and families that there will be no additional quarantine requirements if they do travel, um, for our Easter break. We continue to transition and phase in our students. And on March 22nd, we will welcome our seventh and eighth grade students back to a four-day in-person instruction. So at that point, we will have K through eight, four days a week, in person. And then March 24th, we do have, on top of a conference day, and 64 staff members receiving their second COVID-19 vaccination, we do have our conference day. And this conference day will really focus on wellness and technology. As Mr. Holt talked about at the last board meeting, really needing to talk to our staff about ransomware, cyber attacks, and the best way to prevent these potential threats. And it's a good time with what we've recently experienced and saw what happened at Victor. And we are approving our instructional calendar tonight. And John, can you click on that for me as possible?
No, I'm going to do, can you just stop this here?
Okay. Yes. And while John is pulling that up, the process for establishing our instructional calendar is that the Genesee Valley Bosse's creates a draft calendar. And what the schools in the region try to do as closely as possible is match their calendar to the Bosse's calendar so that our students who attend career and tech programs and our special education programs are on a similar schedule. And then we match our extended vacations. And when we do pull it up, we'll see that we are starting prior to Labor Day. And the good news, it is on Wednesday, September 1st. So Allison shared, it's always nice when we have that day in September and not having to start in, in August. And once we have the draft calendar submitted from, or reviewed with Genesee Valley Bosse's, what we do is we have the district planning team review our calendar and talk about placement of conference days, vacation days, and potential last day of school. So you can see that our first day of school will be September 7th. In October, we have our traditional conference day on the Friday before Columbus Day. November is pretty typical. Um, December, some of the differences between December for our calendar and other calendars, some schools are going right up through school on the 23rd. We were able to take the 23rd off. This year, for a conference day in January, we are placing that on the rating day. So if the region's exams are administered, anybody who had a test administered on the 27th, we will be able to use that day as a scoring day. And then we will have remaining teachers in professional development that day. Our next, we moved our next conference day to March 11th. Um, A, it's a long span between February and April to have our students in session and not have a day off for them. And it breaks up the state assessments, which you can see are in the end of March and at the end of April. So one thing that is different about our spring break is that it is the week prior to Easter. Monroe County is taking that week after Easter. So like this 18th through the 22nd is what Monroe County is taking up. We decided as a region, we didn't want to come back from vacation and have to enter into state assessments for elementarys, 3-3A students. And then May, we do have Memorial Day off. And then you can see we go up until, in school, to the 24th. So we will be approving that later. Any questions in regards to the calendar?
So would that make graduation like the 25th?
25th.
Is it, is it like that, 26th or something like that?
26th. Any questions?
I, I will say that you have to be careful going out for your vacations because some places aren't letting you in.
Aren't letting you in. I was looking at place today. I had to re-figure where I was going because they were pretty difficult.
And if Bosse's decides to amend their calendar, we, we've already amended it this year. We can do the same thing if we need to, correct?
Correct. If we feel it's a big enough change that we need to.
Reprogram.
Right, change our, our calendar as well.
Good. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, community relations.
David, you decide then.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you very briefly. Um, as the process for articulating the budget for next year is proceeding, uh, I will ask that you, um, consider the cuts, the, the drastic cuts to the funding for the strings program last year to have been a temporary decision in light of, uh, budget uncertainty and an opportunity moving forward to restore funding, uh, to that crucial program for our school. End of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We'll obviously take all of those under advisement and be discussing all kinds of things in the finance committee meetings and building our budget. So more to come on all of that in the next week's, next few meetings. Okay. Brings us to reports. David.
That'd be my, correct?
Okay.
Science.
Yeah, so we, the finance committee met tonight, and we worked through the last category sections of the budget that will be proposed. And, uh, it's all consistent with, with what has been presented previously. Uh, no significant changes, you know, a couple little puts and takes here and there, but nothing significant. So we are on, on track for that, what we mentioned previously, that 1% year-over-year increase. And, um, that would still require a supermajority of the public. So, um, that's really about it. And then the rest of it, Ken mentioned earlier in terms of the debt. And I do want to be, kind of come back to that point that, you know, Ken kind of glossed over a little bit, but that's a pretty significant, um, financial benefit to the district that Ken and Cindy and, and others have, 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 you know, uncovered and, and done through the, uh, through the, uh, the debt. So with that said, I, I didn't want that to get, you know, unnoticed as, you know, he, he's pretty humble in what he said, but quite frankly, it was a, you know, significant improvement of $370,000 over six years. Um, that said also, I think, uh, Ken and Cindy and others have worked.
That said also, I think Ken and Cindy and others have worked diligently to kind of pull this budget together. At this point in time, I'd say we're doing everything we can to restore all the progress. Okay, so I'll just leave it there. And as you mentioned, more to follow in the next couple of weeks.
We really don't have reports on any of the others except policy. We did meet, and we have our first read of the anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policy chart. Policy statements are fun to go through. But yeah, other than that, really nothing else. Community engagement's still on a, on a pause, and GCEF is still meeting virtually or through Zoom. And teachers should please, any, any fun stuff you want to do and need some extra cash, a little funding, go to GCEF. They're more than happy to help you all out. So, submit your proposals and get some things going in your classrooms if you're, so, I'm fine. All right, so personnel. So, eight, you're just going to go through 807?
Yeah. Should we do the whole, and then we'll?
No, do eight. Right, stop at eight. Just do 801 to 806.
Okay.
Consent.
Okay, all right. 8.01 is the, is the category. I'd like to make a motion that we approve items. 8.02 through 8.07.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. It's just so sweet. We, we probably could have let you have your vacation and found somebody to second everything. I'm just saying, but it was nice of you to come out. Any discussion on 8.02 through 8.07? Okay, all in favor of those, of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any paws? All right, motion carried. Okay, so now we will pull them up.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve the tenure for, upon the recommendation of superintendent for Christie Frye, am I pronouncing it right? To be granted tenure.
All right, Christie, come on up. So typically, there's, we have everyone line up and we shake hands and hand hands, but we're doing a conscious, you know, ceremony here. So, select a bag, and I'll show everyone what is in a bag. So, typically, everyone knows that we give a white carnation to our newly-appointed tenure appointees. And we usually have cake, and we can't have cake, so we have individually wrapped cookies. And then the traditional Geneseo Blue Devil cake. It's down here deep underneath all the confetti. So, congratulations. Anytime a teacher is granted tenure, it is a huge milestone in your career. To be granted tenure anywhere near or around a pandemic makes it that much more important. You have overcome things in your academic career more than anyone else has ever been faced with. So, thank you for what you've done, and welcome to Geneseo. First, all in favor of. Say aye, now that she's in the way of the flower. Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
8.01.
Okay. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tenure for Lindsay Howard.
Sorry?
And accepting. Ms. Howard sent me up.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations. I got your flowers.
Thank you. Thanks, Reg.
Good job for this, Howard. I'm just sitting here. That's fine. She can have it.
Give her another one.
No, no, I mean, it's in the bag already. It's okay.
Okay.
You need to vote on that motion.
Do we?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. We need to do this the right way. Aye, all right.
Why don't we just do?
Just read it, and then I'll make motion. We'll make sure we motion it. I mean, we'll make sure we vote on it.
Okay, all right. Pound recommendation superintendent, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tenure for this Jenna Jones.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Congratulations. I've been by that name my whole life. I was Jenna Jones until I got married, so that just threw me way off.
Well, I'll be, we're in July.
Well, there we go.
So, we're going to have two Mrs. Sittler. I think she's my daughter. She's in charge when I'm not in the building.
All right.
Okay, upon recommendation of superintendent, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tenure for Ms. Ashley Kirks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any paws? Motion carried. Come on up.
So, and last year in March, obviously, with everything shut down, we did make tenure recommendations for our teachers, and we were unable to do a ceremony. So, I do want to recognize Jill Christensen, tenured in the elementary. She has a second tenure area at Geneseo.
I've been here very long to have two 10 years.
And I have to believe in my first-year experience.
It was great year all over again for my 19th. Yep, first one.
We can create a tenure area for a remote if you'd like.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Abigail Davison was tenured last year as an elementary teaching assistant. Stephanie Dwyer was tenured as a middle school, high school foreign language teacher. Allison Shields, middle school, high school math.
Yay.
Maya Wolfhanger is out on maternity leave, and she was tenured in middle school, high school special education.
Yay.
And Danielle Rice, elementary teaching assistant.
Oh, Danielle. On time daycare prior.
Yeah.
And Cassandra Soroli, often known as the Disney princess teacher, tenured in elementary education.
And a beautiful dancer.
I miss seeing you dance.
I miss dancing. I know, I miss it.
And Heather Mau was tenured as an elementary, middle, or elementary teaching assistant. Now, as always, Tim always had a famous line that you are more than welcome to stay, but able to go. And so, you could always stay for the board meeting, but we completely understand.
We're almost done anyway.
If you needed to go.
Yeah, we're close. We've got like five minutes. So, if you want to go, you can.
Well, congratulations. You just need someone to make the move, right? Allison, they're all looking.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, one and all. Go by. Thank you very much.
It's in her bag, but they can certainly, there's plenty of extra.
Yeah.
There's, if everyone wants to grab a cookie on the way out, plus this in your bag, please do. I, I would love to say I am kind of disappointed that we couldn't do our standard all standing together and shake hands, because that's really always a special time, important to me and Russ the Board to be able to get, you know, meet you a bit more and mingle a little bit and shake all your hands and tell you thank you for all the hard work you, you do. But in particular, this year, it feels like it's even more unfortunate. We can't do that, because you've worked even harder this year. And we want to thank all of you for your hard work in the last year, your continued hard work, and for choosing to stay at Geneseo and share your gifts and talents with our children, and they're the fortunate ones. So, thank you very much. All right, David?
Okay. Business, which is item 9.01, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 9.02 through 9.09.
Second.
Any discussion on any business items? We have a YMCA. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any paws?
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Okay, the business office, which is item 10.01. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 10.02.
Second.
Any discussion on those two items? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any paws? Motion carried. And that brings us to adjourning.
No executive session, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Craig's having a beer trip. Everybody else?
Thank you.
Aye.